Hello. All right, so it sounds like we're underway, so we'll call this work session of the Port of Olympia Commission. It's now in session because I'm operating remotely here. Vice President Vasavida, would you, would you please preside over today's meeting?
Yes, Commissioner Ile, that would be my pleasure. So this meeting is called to order. And if we could start by having an approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion to approve the agenda? Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Great, then our agenda is approved. It has one sweet item, which is a work session on broadband in Washington Ports. And Camille has helped put together some amazing speakers. We, and maybe you want to do the honors of the introductions, but we've got folks in the room and then folks online.
Yes. Yes, well, thank you so much. Camille Saint-Ange, Director of Community Initiatives and Commission Affairs. I want to introduce Kara Reinold with the Port of Whitman. She is the Executive Director. And then online, we have Gina Stark, and she's with the Port of Bellingham, and she's Economic Development Project Manager. And they'll be speaking later in the presentation. I'm going to get us going today with just a very short overview to kind of set the stage at the Port of Olympia, a little bit of history. So please, I, I do not consider myself a subject matter expert in broadband. That's why we have our guest speakers here today. But I will share a little bit of the tale about what we have going on here at the port. We'll talk about the history of some legislation. And then some, what things look like as far as access in Thurston County. Port on fiber optics, and then also we'll have our subject matter experts or guests speak about from Port, Port of Whitman, Bellingham will present to you. And they'll be the bulk of information we talked about. Seriously. It was working just a second ago. I don't know why it keeps doing it. Why don't you keep the dance for me, then I'll help when we do a transition. Oh, you're, okay, we'll just pause for a second. It sounds like the computer is frozen up.
In addition to broadband, could you help us with PowerPoint clicking? We have those same struggles that are.
I know. It's sort of astonishing. I can't recall. The last time I've been to a meeting where they were seamless, where there was absolutely no issues with PowerPoint.
Seems like it should be, but.
No.
Haven't made the right offerings at the right alters.
All right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, no worries.
We'll make it work, Kara. Hey. Yes. Okay, very good. So let's talk about digital inclusion. I've shared a quote from Governor Inslee. So access to Brad broadband is the single most important economic development tool. Our tool could right now and the most necessary to our state. And at the highest level, leaders of State of Washington have recognized the need for broadband access. And we're here today because commissioners have, have asked for us to bring this topic forward. And so it's really a discussion, and I encourage you when we get to our subject matter experts, you know, to ask questions along the way. But let's start with what broadband coverage looks like in Washington State. So this is the percent of households with broadband subscription. And I think what's most important, well, one of the important factors in this map, there's this light blue area. Those thirty-five to sixty-six percent do not or have subscription. Which means that there's a huge portion of people that don't even have areas that are less than thirty-five percent. So across the state, you can see that there is really a need. So this need has been recognized, and in 2018, House Bill twenty-six sixty-four was passed. And it extended existing telecommunications authority to all ports in Washington State in order to facilitate public and private partnerships in wholesale telecommunications services and infrastructure. So we know that when we improve broadband access, it drives growth creation. It improves economic vitality, and it promotes innovation. From that legislation, a natural next step was the forming of Petricor. So Petricor was formed in 2020. And there were six ports representing every corner of Washington. Things in the state came together and it, including the Port of Kalama, Ridgefield, Skagit, Bellingham, Pasco, and Whitman County. And Kara Reinold and then Gina Stark have been very intimately involved since the early days. And they're going to be speaking about this a little bit more because this is a publicly owned corporation. In 2019, might be helpful to know additional legislation passed. And broadband access for all came, came into law. And from that, we now have the Office of Broadband, which was established at the Department of Commerce. And they, from there, developed a five-year action plan to extend broadband needs across the state. And then they also put in a state digital equity plan. And they've created funding through what is commonly known as BEED, which is the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment. So like I mentioned earlier, I'm not the expert on that, but this is, you know, kind of the cursory overview stage for our folks. I just want to pause for a moment and just recognize that, you know, coming out of, coming out of, in the pandemic. Leading into the pandemic, the need was already recognized and legislation was taking place. Then we get to the pandemic. And it was, there was a bright light shown on areas that really needed broadband access. It affected school, healthcare, and the need for remote. So if you're in an area that didn't have, didn't have broadband access, or you have maybe broadband service that wasn't performing at speeds that allowed you to interact with the world. That light was just shown everywhere, including in our county. Speaking of that, let's talk about our county. So what we know is that while we don't have the highest rate of unserved people, we are in the top eleven. So what we're looking at here is a ranking of counties in Washington State. And the number of business and residential locations with no internet access. And Thurston has been identified to have seventy-two hundred locations without internet, or thirty-three hundred that are underserved. So if you're curious, you know, what that means to our county, so the unserved is about seven percent of the businesses and residential locations in the county. If you combine the unserved and the underserved, it's about ten percent.
Can I ask a question? What is, how does like Starlink and some of these options impact whether people are unserved or underserved?
That is a good question, and I might not have the answer for that. But if it's not answered in the presentations that were given today, then we can certainly follow up on that. I wanted to just give you a little snack bite of what it looks like in terms of clusters in our county, where you can see there's definite, definite areas. And I say clusters because, you know, we've got these grouped. I mean, you can drill down to, into see, you know, location by location. But there's, there's spatterings throughout Thurston County where you can see there's just, there's just people who don't have access. Now I want to speak about our port locations so that you have some relevance to what's happening here. So before we go into this map and the others, I want to tell you that as we go forward, if we need to improve our maps, we can do that. But for this, for this conversation, I think this is a good overview. But the, this is Tom Water, and to get you oriented in the up. The upper portion is the Clean Water Center. That's that orange dot. Then down is New Market is green, and to the right is the Olympia Airport. And the red lines outline the port boundaries. The yellow, the, which is, I think, probably most important, I think, for this conversation is to see where our port fiber is located, and we have in-ground fiber. And then outside the port is the Aqua. So please know that the HCP, when that went into play, Habitat Conservation Plan, it essentially stalled any, any work that we had going on to expand our broadband, because we, we needed to stop at that point. But we do have some broadband access in there.
And was that mainly tenant-driven, or was the, was that if you build it, they will come, or did the tenant?
So that is a good question, and I asked Clarita to attend today because she really had the interaction. Clarita, Clarita, do you mind coming up so that we can catch you on the microphone?
Sure, yeah. Clarita Maddox, Real Estate Senior Manager. Yes, most of it is, most of it is most of it is tenant-driven, but a lot of them because of the location to, towards the airport. The Aqua, most of it is aerial. So they have access through aerial. We also have underground fiber optic in all the bright yellows within our boundaries. And some of them also use towers or, or the phone in order to get good communication and internet services.
But you can't get fiber, you have to, that has to be a cable, right?
Yes.
For the fiber part.
Yes, so you have to have your, your infrastructure done. So there's a couple of spots at the corner of Seventy-Six and Tom Water Boulevard, the city made access possible when they revamped that old water boulevard, which used to be industrial, a road. And they changed it and made it accessible and available to anyone coming home on water boulevard. So as you can see from that, there is a, a nice big section of the yellow bright lights, I mean, bright lines that serve that cluster of tenants.
Rita, you had mentioned at an earlier session, just that wasn't on this topic, that we had port properties that don't have.
That is correct.
And are they primarily here at the airport?
Yes, they're primarily at the airport and New Market. That's right. So if you see only to the left, closer to the freeway, you see like a little L shape. That is the only access on that side that has fiber optics.
So they don't have service at all?
Anything to the north, anything to the north from there, don't have it. And like I said, we were, many years ago, we wanted to, because we saw the need to have that as something the port would offer on our properties, we began to think about, and we invest in this and start doing it. And then the HCP came along and we kind of had to stop our planning. So we're limited.
Quick, uh, quick question, please. So the fiber that is there on port property, it looks like it's connected to the fiber that's not on port property, but that was, that if it was tenant-driven, it must have been installed by, installed and serviced by an internet service provider, then do we know which one?
They have several actually, because what they need is the infrastructure. They had the pipes, and then they put the connection equipment wherever they needed. And then they, companies such as Century Link, Xfinity. There's a couple others that are not well-known and are the ones that come in and do that. So the port had offered them easements in order to install it. And that's how we went about it. It was like installing another utility, basically. So the tenants would come in and come forward and say, we need an easement for this or an easement for that. And then the services that they would have would be based on whoever they chose, who was the service provider. And the cheaper one, too. It's not cheap or commercial. We were fortunate when we were serving the public meetings at the Clean Water Center. We did bring internet to the Clean Water Center, and so all of those buildings have ability to connect.
Well, I wonder, now that we're considering our own fiber, what in terms of those
They're perpetual.
So we would need to compete.
Yes. So, so one of the things we have done in the past, so you know how we managed it. We did charge because it was a, a way for the company to have great revenues through our tenants. So we know that they had great big accounts through them, so we just, we couldn't just give it away. And so we just put a fee to the easements that they were requiring, to the companies, the service providers. Is that an answer to your question?
Do you do that currently, or did you say that was?
That, that's when we signed those easements.
Oh, when we first?
So when we signed the easements, let's say they get a fee of a thousand dollars just to have the infrastructure in. No, so one-time fee. So we got smarter, we're getting smarter. Because it was so unique, it was part of what they needed to do, like in the past, they did not use like utilities like electricity, even charge easements against the, and, and this fiber optic type of communication and technology, I believe. But if I'm not, and I can't quote where exactly it is, but was pushing to be considered one of the essential utilities. And so as such, then you don't charge for installing it. We were kind of in the, in the, starting, putting it through the port, and I would charge a certain amount just to get the pipes in there.
It's like the port wasn't allowed to be in the business of broadband at that time.
We were not allowed to be in the business. Exactly. So we didn't invest.
We're going to go through a couple more now, so maybe just.
Okay, sure, sure.
Okay, very good. All right, so let's take a look at the market district and the peninsula. So we know where that includes. So the farmer's market and the adjacent properties here, and then the Rance Group Building. Anthony's Homeport is part of our properties, Boatworks, the Marina, so that's what we'll take a look at. And just know that, I just want to give the caveat, one of these maps will be improved in the future if we proceed any further. But let's take a look at the peninsula, and so this, the blue dotted line you can see goes down Marine Drive, past the Marina, all the way out next to KGY, and it heads out to the Marine Terminal. And then the green line is, I don't know who it is.
That is for warehouses. Ah, so they, they wanted to have their own services, and we expected them to have their own service, so they, like, they installed.
And then this is the market district, and so this is, this is just a map of where the conduit was laid to hold the, hold the fiber. So essentially, you can see it's coming in, oh, hold on, I'm going to get oriented. The Rance Group is over here. And you can see the, the farmer's market is over here, so we have all the lines in many areas. And like you mentioned earlier, this is before we had the, ports had the authority for telecommunications.
All of the red on this is port-owned, everyone?
That's what I understand, yes. That's what I believe. That's what I believe today. So that's, you know, very short, high level, not a lot of detail, but really, our guest speakers, Kara Reebold and then Gina Stark will talk to you about how this works in the port world in a much more in-depth level than, than I have here today. So I'm going to hand this over to Kara. Yes, Kara is next.
Feel free, as I go through this, to stop me and ask questions, so it's getting the information. But I'll just talk a little bit about some of the publicly-owned broadband projects that are going on throughout the state, and a little bit about BEED and how some of those entities are preparing for it. So Camille gave a nice introduction about the formation of Petricor Broadband. It's a municipal LLC. So we follow all of the same rules that port districts follow. We're, we're subject to all of the same RCWs under that. And the purpose of it was to support wholesale telecommunications. So Petricor itself does not own any infrastructure, doesn't own any equipment to light anything, doesn't sell any services. We actually just manage infrastructure for other ports, counties, and cities. And those services that we do, there's kind of three main ones. So advisory services, we've done feasibility studies, planning studies, as well as assisting entities in applying for grant funding. We have done project management when those grant funds are awarded. You know, there are several ports that have said, you know, now we have a couple million dollars to do a broadband project, but we still don't have anyone in-house who's, you know, well-versed in this. So we've taken on project management roles in, in that case where we will help them through the bid, help them evaluate their design, RFPs, meet with the designer, talk them through what the project needs. So kind of helping to represent the project owner. And then manage the construction, oversee that, and then take the ASBILs when they're done and put them into a GIS mapping so they can, you know, have all of the maps of where their infrastructure is, how it was spliced, where the vaults are located. Network management, so we will continue to manage that infrastructure long-term if they'd like. We do it as a revenue share. So we have a fiber software system, Vetro, that keeps it all mapped where all those locations are. We can create shape files, and we can create KMC files so that they can send it off to their public works directors, whoever wants a copy of where the infrastructure is. And then a lot of these entities lease the fiber out to the ISPs to light it and do that work. And so we'll keep track of who's on which strand, we'll give ISP assignments. We have a database that we can say this is who you need to bill each month, and the strands are leasing. So we interface with the ISPs for them, so that the, the one role that the public entities have is to bill monthly. They retain ownership of doing that billing, doing the sales tax and remitting that. But we tell them, here's who you bill and what their runs are for, and we manage that piece. Also, we've assisted with having network operations center contracts. So a twenty-four-seven phone number that is actually run by Noanet, another statewide entity that works with PUDs in a similar format. But they have a call center out of Spokane, Washington. And so anytime a fiber is cut or an ISP has problems with service, they call that number, it's manned. And then they, there's a tree list, and they call someone on our team at the Port of Whitman to help determine if we need to roll out a construction company or what's going on.
Are the ISPs always private sector or are there public entities that also are ISPs?
Noanet would be an example of a public entity that's an ISP. City of Anacortes runs their own broadband. So there are public entities that are lighting it. We don't work directly with a public entity that's lighting it. We just work with, right now, companies that, or public entities that own the infrastructure, own the vaults, own the fiber, own the duct, have the pole contact permits, but then lease it all out for someone else to do all the end services. And then we, of course, with all of this, do a little bit of work in the federal, state, and local policy development. So sometimes when city or counties first starting into the broadband, and they go to the smaller towns to get a franchise, and we find that, you know, franchise language isn't conducive to this type of utility, and so we work through some of those things with them. So across the state, this kind of shows the different entities that we've worked with, and this could be anything from planning to actually managing the infrastructure. We did work with the Kalispel tribe of, in Onondra County, and they built fiber to the home, to every home on their tribal lands. We partnered with Spokane County. They've now turned up their own PDA, Broadlink. And so we worked with Broadlink on their projects, mostly just kind of going back and forth on how are you approaching this pilot? What are you doing? Sharing templates, things like that. Pilem County, we assisted them with their application. And I think they got ten or twenty million dollars, I think they got twenty million, from the broadband office. There was, after, you know, when all of the federal funds came out after COVID, there was a lot of broadband funding. Curb had dollars to hand out, the Public Works Board had dollars to hand out. And then the broadband office was formed, and they had two rounds of applications. And so a lot of these dots came from during those phases of assisting entities and applying for those funds.
This might be a dumb question, but there's fiber, and then you can also have cable to in not fiber internet, right?
You can. I, I don't think there's a lot of that being installed.
It's just old.
Yep.
So like, all the new stuff is fiber?
Probably mostly. I think there's probably some cases where they, maybe they bring, I know there are companies that bring fiber maybe to the curb, and then they take in, I'm not going to think of it. It will come to me. And they use something different to just go into the building. But for the most part, the cost of fiber, you would just take fiber all the way in. It's mostly in the cases where they're trying to overbuild existing systems, but don't want to take it all the way.
Right.
So, you know, the Port of Whitman, we started this work, really started with my predecessor, Joe Paray, back in two thousand. It's when they got legislation to allow rural port districts to work in broadband. And after that, in two thousand nine, the federal government came up with money to, to fund. The program was called BTOP, and it was really for middle-mile fiber across states. And so the port was a sub-recipient of Noanet, who did a lot of that fiber across the state. And we got fiber from Spokane, Washington, the US Bank Building, all the way down to Clarkston, Washington. And it passed through several small towns, Pullman being one of them. And then we had also purchased from a Vista fiber between the two universities in our, one, in our district. It's Washington State University, and then over in Idaho, the University of Idaho. So we had two big middle-mile, well, Spokane was a really big middle mile, but between the two universities was an important mile run. And we started off within Pullman, there were several cell towers that needed fiber to them. And the city of Pullman also wanted fiber to their fire stations, their water towers for monitoring. And so that was kind of the first build-out of the fiber. It's all, it, it all lands in what we call co-location facilities. So in Pullman, there's, there's a hut. And then the fiber goes through there and terminates in there, and then the ISPs put their equipment in those huts, and they lease that space from us, and they pay for the power, and then within there, we can build out to different businesses and then just give them an assignment in a rack. And so right now, we have at least seventeen carriers that are operating on this open access system in Whitman County. We've done fiber to the home in partners. So this is a picture of the co-location facility. You can see some providers are just in racks. You know, they have one or two rack units. We call them, each one's about an inch of space that they lease. There are other providers that put in their own cabinets completely locked in there, and the facilities are monitored by the NOC. So when you go in, you have to call in, and I'll get a ticket to my email saying so-and-so's coming in. This is what they said they're doing. This is the phone number when they leave, and get a ticket. It also monitors in there the temperature of the room and our other systems. These can be full-on telecommunications huts. We have one in the basement of our port office in Colfax. And it's, it's, it's a storage closet, so it kind of varies in size and scope of what they needed. I, I think, you know, thinking about your port properties, you could probably get away with, if you had a building that you owned, putting something in an existing building, or you could purchase a hut. The huts right now are about a hundred thousand dollars, and you need a crane to unload them, you know, so it can be about a hundred fifty thousand, just. And sometimes east side, west side prices don't transfer very well. But like the Port of Skagit is using an existing building for one of their co-location facilities. So our, our fiber backbone went through, we had a lot of businesses hooked up. We had connections to the government entities in the communities, all of the libraries, all of the schools. But fiber to the home wasn't really happening on its own. And so we applied for Curb funding to build fiber to every home. In five communities, small communities in Whitman County, small communities being three hundred homes per community or less. And these were communities where Frontier had been the incumbent licensed exchange carrier. And as we were getting our funding, Frontier was being purchased by Zipley. And Zipley was saying, we're going to come out, we want to do this too, because it's our territory. And so the port worked really hard to get an agreement with Zipley so that we could still have the system be open access. But we were able to reduce the costs, the ongoing costs to the port, because Zipley signed an IRU where they would own the system and do all of, all of the pole contacts, all of the design work for the system. And the port would still be able to operate it as an open access system. So we have four different providers that Four different providers that lease strands from the port because we have a right to use it for twenty years at no cost to us. Um and they pay us twenty dollars a month to use it, so Zipley uses it. At no charge, they don't have to pay us, but we do get revenue from the open access providers. At complicated agreement, really even more complicated once we tried to put it into action, there were a lot of. A lot of speed bumps along the way um. But the end result has been great for those communities and great for the ISPs that we've been working with in our county because the system's been going on for so long. ISPs were really used to um leasing fiber and they built business models around this, and so. We were able to kind of honor that business model with them in a unique way. Um but still take actually all of the risk out of it for the port because if. Pole burns down or whole fees go up or any of those things, we have no ongoing cost for those five towns, which is. Um really nice. I don't think Zipley has signed another deal like that since then. Um so, one of the ports that we managed fiber for and helped them with a couple of applications is the Port of Garfield. And they are in um Palmeroy, Washington, so not too far from the Washington Idaho border. And unlike the Port of Whitman, the Port of Garfield does not own a backbone going through their community. So we own that backbone from Spokane to Clarkson, which when in Spokane, it lands in a place called the US Bank Building, and in there, you can get to every major. Carrier in the state, and it has a connection all the way over to the Westin, which is the other big telecom hotel in our state, and so you. That's, that's the importance of that building, so the Port of Garfield doesn't own a backbone, but Noa Net does, and Noa Net's backbone. Starts in Clarkston, they ride us all the way down to Clarkston and then goes all the way to Walla Walla, and again, this is how they get back to all of the. Other major carriers, getting the internet out there, so. The Port of Garfield built out with Curb funding and this was um. It was mostly grant funding, I'm trying, it wasn't a hundred percent grant funding because this was back in Curb, so I don't remember what their match was, but I could. You're interested, I can find that out for you um and they. They built out the whole system and what we did was that the providers had to install what we call like the last. Mile, which isn't nearly a mile, but they had to install from the curb, we'll say, to the home. So that way we didn't have construction contractors trying to get to each home, and not every home wanted it, so we built it out so that the ISP could then go, if you said. You know, you wanted it, Amy, the ISP could plug in here at this pole, run the drop cable to your house, attach to your house, do all the work inside. Because it, stuff has to happen inside and outside. For the underground drops, we did, if the homeowner would sign a waiver ahead of time, we built the conduit to the home. Put um heel tape through it like a pole string, so that then whichever provider you decided you wanted um. They would come and pull the last, you know, the fiber in through there, put the box on the house and do the install, so it um. Real public-private partnership in that way because the providers didn't get paid any money from the port to do that, the port was able to purchase the materials. That drop cable and the box that goes on the house, which is like a twenty-dollar box, looks like a little sprinkler box to me. Um but the provider had to do that work to do the install, and then if Amy decided tomorrow she wants to switch to a different provider. The cable still stays, the box still stays, once it was installed, the port owns that. And so you don't get, you know, the satellite dish effect of multiple dishes um. Fifty percent take rate uh after six months of construction completion, so the take rate just means how many of the homes had signed up. For this service, when we first started doing uh fiber to the home planning studies. Thirty percent was like the number that you'd use in your financials, yeah, your expectation was like, oh, if we got thirty percent, this was a big deal. So to get fifty percent after six months exceeded expectations greatly. And in this town, they had at the time, First Step Internet um was a company that we worked with on our system, they were doing wireless. Uh service within the community, and the port commissioners were really nervous about this, thinking what, what if people don't switch? What if First Step won't use our fiber? We've, we've done all this. And we had a conversation with Kevin Owen, who owns the company, he said, I want to switch everyone I can because. It makes my system more reliable, which means I have less uh callouts of my people driving all the way to Palmeroy. You know, putting it on fiber, I know there's, you know, I've now guaranteed there's only two problems, either my equipment, which I can see. From my home office, or it's your fiber and that means it's your problem, so. You know, that we navigated there and it, and it worked really well, they have two wholesale providers, so this is, you know. That backbone bringing in, one is Noa Net, and the other one is um Century Link, now Lumen. They built into the Colo facility that the port had, and they're also selling to one of the providers, they have three retail providers. Offering service in this town and, and I think it's like about eight hundred homes. Could be off a little either way, but it's, it's not too many, and so, because that was another concern early on um. Can you really have open access? Will there really be competition? I'd say probably only two of the providers are actually really competing for business, the third one uh. Focused on the commercial business activity, not so much the homes there. And they have a gig, you know, they're offering a gig symmetrical for less than a hundred dollars per month, I haven't looked lately to see what that, what their prices are, but. Affordable for the high, higher speeds they had, this is a horrible sight, it's hard to see, but um. These were the, these are the projects that we're managing right now, and on the far right is the, is that take rate, so. The third one down, twenty-eight percent, Lincoln County, that's Elmira, Creston, Harrington, they just completed that build in January. Um and so this number is really new and we anticipate that that, that will go up. When you get to the Port of Clarkston's two projects, um that take rate is low. And the reason is because when they started their projects. Or what, they got them funded, took a little while to get everything designed and construction, Cable One, who is a competitor in that town and. And doesn't use the dark fiber systems, they went into these areas and they improved their infrastructure and. Built fiber as well, so I think that's um, you know, if you have an active provider, there's a. That doesn't want to use open access system, then you might not see that fifty percent take rate, then um. Below that, Port of Columbia, forty-seven percent, forty-five percent, and then the Port of Garfield, I guess now it's fifty-nine percent, these numbers were run. Last week for a, a presentation that I did at WPPA, and the Port of Whitman's. With our Zipley partnership is at seventy-two percent, and then we also built the outskirts of Malden and Pine City sixty-two, so. Uh you can see the difference between if you have somebody who's, you know, an ISP that you're gonna compete with. Uh you might not have as high of a take rate without any competition with other ISPs we've seen.
And that it was, and you'd be competing with them if they already had easements and cable laid or the ability to lay cable.
So if they already had, yeah, they either their own fiber system, or they already had the pole contacts, maybe some conduit in place, some backbone. Where they said, you know, the port's gonna do this, we're gonna up our game. I think a lot of the areas where we were really successful, some of these other projects is where um. Century Link, Lumen Territory, and they just weren't investing in these really rural communities any longer, and so that. Provided a real need that we were able to fill, but.
So where there's not access is where ports can be more successful, where there is access, you're gonna end up with.
That's been our experience, what, what I've observed.
We have Lumen, both Infinity, we'll pretty much work together and own almost all the.
And in some areas. Infinity's not available and that's the access issue, right? Then you have really slow.
So these projects all came from that bucket of funding, you know, after COVID, so they're all, you can see the funder on all of them. Either the broadband office, Curb, or the Public Works Board. Uh the next big round of funding is gonna come from BEAD, and so uh. Our state has one point two billion uh to invest, and then they also have a match. That the state has put forward um, brings the number up to, I think, one point six billion. That match is only available to public entities to get, um Erica Henry, who's. I'm gonna call her the deputy director at the broadband office, I don't know if that's, I don't think, she chats a little bit over there, um but. She talked at WPPA and um. Right now, it sounds like that match, we haven't seen rules for it, we haven't seen really the application for it, except that they've said very clearly, and I think. The legislature did too, that it's for public entities to use, BEAD requires a twenty-five percent match, and so that can be the match so that public entities don't have to come up with. Twenty-five percent of what might be a forty million dollar project. So the state will provide that. What I heard her say last Thursday was that that could look still quite a few different ways, it might be. You know, like the Port of Whitman might apply. And have ISPs that are partners who are going to light it and maybe do some wireless work, but we're, we already own broadband, we're gonna be the lead entity, we'll be. Kind of highly involved in the project. It could look, maybe, if you um had other ISPs partners that you wanted to work with. That you maybe did less of that work as the public entity, but still for the applicant. And structured maybe your arrangements, your agreements with those ISPs differently, but it allowed you to have maybe a little bit more say. And how projects look, because you'd be bringing twenty-five percent of the money to the table, it does mean though. In either one of those scenarios that you end up with the fiduciary responsibility of making sure that all of the federal requirements are followed, all of the ongoing. Reporting gets done, um you know, all of the strings that would come with federal dollars, so there's. There's still a significant body of work associated with either path, but the second ones um may be. A little bit less.
And does Petricor assume that body of work for the ports you partner with?
Um I think some of them are going to ask us to do that, and so if, if we feel like we can successfully do it, we will. Until we get a little bit more of the, those rules um. From the state, you know, I don't have a firm answer on that, but I, I anticipate that's gonna be something. That will be asked to do and, and we will consider doing it as long as we think we can do it successfully.
Can you speak to one other thing that the broadband office uh person was saying? I think she seemed to be implying that for whatever geographic region that people apply for grants. It's going to be important that the applicant shows that they're reaching every home.
Yes, the requirement of BEAD is internet for all, so every unserved or underserved location. Has to be, your, your application needs to show how they're going to be served. There might be ones, you know, in the farthest reaches that you're not, that your application might say. We looked at serving them with fiber and it was cost prohibitive and. She said it's gonna be a lot of detail that you'll have to provide for that, we looked at doing wireless, and this is why we can't do it with wireless. And these folks are going to have to be served with satellite, and that would be the only exception um. But I, I think they don't anticipate seeing a lot of or giving a lot of exceptions, the. Goal is that everyone is served and BEAD would love it if everyone is served with fiber, but we recognize that that's probably not financially feasible. In all locations, and I'll show you Whitman Counties in a minute. That, so um unserved is less than twenty-five megabits per second down and three up, so. Uh places where Zoom calls would feel probably impossible, and underserved is a hundred down and, and twenty up. And the, the map that Camille showed in with BEAD, these speeds are self-reported by ISPs. And it can be them saying, I can serve Amy with these speeds, it doesn't necessarily mean that Amy actually. Gets these speeds or is even buying service from me, so the whole FCC map is reported by providers. Then there was some challenge processes that allowed individual homeowners or public entities to try to challenge and say. Hey, you know, this company said they can do this, we don't believe they can, because they had to put in how they would do it with fiber, we don't believe. They have fiber in our area, so how could they, you have to be able to provide service within ten days, speed you said um. We don't think that they can, and so you could challenge those, our state just also took uh. The FCC map and completed its own challenge process with, I think that she said the window closed last Wednesday or Tuesday. Uh similar type of thing, a chance for homeowners or public entities or other groups to look at what was being reported and. And truth tested from where they stood, either send in um actual speed tests or evidence that they had collected of whether it would be. So I just want to point out that that's unserved and underserved might not really reflect what the actual home. Is getting or could get, it's reported by those ISPs. The goal is to have it do that, so this is just kind of the overall timeline um. Where you can see here is that that challenge process ended, now it's all going to the ISPs for them to have a. Opportunity uh for rebuttal of any challenges that were issued against them, and this all closes up on June. Of this year, and then we have a little gap there, um I'm sure if you're at the broadband office will feel very short. They are gonna finish their application and push that out and webinars, and September through December is the first round of applications. And uh I think what I heard Erica say last week is that funding might not, you know, by the time. Current, after they evaluate applications and do awards, contracts for this money might not be in um. Your audience's hands until mid twenty twenty-five, so you know, we're looking a long ways out before. Dollars are actually hitting the streets on that.
Before you go beyond that current, so this, this September will be the due date for applications for the bulk of the one point six billion dollars. I mean, some money might get reallocated afterwards, but like the whole federal funds that were given for full connectivity. Um for our state or for our county, like that's the moment, and so one of the reasons I was so excited to have you come speak to our port staff. Uh and commissioners is that to the extent there is any effort going on in Thurston County, like we've heard that. Nisqually is connecting a backbone with Sahela's tribe, like how we. Or anyone, and what partnerships are being built to have the biggest bite of this funding proposal possible? It seems like we have a very short time to get engaged in that.
Exactly, if it's going to be a requirement that we figure out how to serve every home in the area, it will be a partnership effort.
We then, we the applicant, not we the port themselves to do that, so we need to partner with Nisqually Tribe and. Also, maybe cities even get this done.
Um so this kind of just goes over that's, volume two has been accepted by NTIA, every state had to. Develop their own rules and submit it to NTIA and those had to be approved, so volume two was the final one. And the challenge process was completed last week and project areas, these are still very much draft, although I think they're, you know. Now maybe a third or fourth draft, so probably getting closer to what we're gonna see for the final, but just to be real clear that there still could be some changes.
Um, other project areas?
So project areas, I'll go forward one slide, these are the project areas in Thurston County, so these are where the unserved and underserved. Broadband serviceable locations, BSLs are, and the naming of them, I think there's three hundred and some. Project areas in the entire state, so the project area number is just whatever number it is. And then on the right-hand column there, those are the number of BSLs in the project area, so you can see. In, in that green area, you have eleven hundred BSLs, but you have a lot of white space in between. You need to get to all of those green dots, but there are, not green dots, but all those green polygons, but they are really spread out.
That's defined by the feds?
This is defined by our state.
And that's where you're saying every house has to be served within the project area?
Yep, so you know, if you, when you engage in your, uh if you engage in conversations with other. Entities, you know, one big focus would be making sure that somebody. Has a plan of how to serve that green area, I mean, that's what I would look at, that looks like the hardest one to me, and that. Uh you would, you'd have better ideas with geography, but, but if there's a company that's already serving all of that white body in the middle. And that might be the company that would be most attracted to applying to serve the rest, I mean, there's a lot of factors.
So what happens if, if you have people like who don't want it, like you had in your area? So you only have a, a take rate that's lower, what does it mean then to serve every household?
Serving the household means you have to be able to hook them up, serve them within ten. Serving the household means you have to be able to hook them up, serve them within ten business days at overpost, yep, ten business days of requests at the um speeds, you know, over a hundred by twenty.
So basically, you have sort of get stuff to the curb, and then you have the ability to put it in in ten days.
Yep.
Intriguing.
Wow. So I just included this slide because this shows who your incumbent local exchange carriers are according to the FCC. So it's starting off, you know, some of your first conversations might end up involving some of these companies because they are already.
So that turquoise there is um Tenino, and that's where I live. And literally, I just got internet last year, and it's with um Xfinity. They had to put in an additional three hundred feet cable from their fiber to connect to my home. So this is really interesting to me.
Yeah. So just to be clear, this map is just showing their areas, not necessarily the connections this way, and this would show you what, according to the FCC, these are the unserved and underserved, so if you can kind of.
Maybe that would be tough.
Yeah.
A lot. So this is Whitman County. Um, the blue dots are all served, and we've kind of blown them up so you could actually see them in different sizes. And so um you can kind of see the clusters around Pullman and the five fibered home. The red dots are unserved and underserved. It's a lot. The gray shaded area, we have two independent telephone companies that have built fiber to the farm literally in our county.
But there's no requirement you serve people on the same terms, in terms of there being some houses that are where where the driveway's really long, or it would take, be harder to get to? Is there a requirement that the the offer of internet is at the same price for everyone?
There are some, yes, pricing considerations. And I don't have those memorized, but.
So you can't say, we'll serve you ten thousand dollars? Like, it it has to be like, we'll serve you at our marketed rate.
Yeah, advertise.
Right.
So we have, this is uh again, parts to see, but what we have in the far right column is the BSLs per square mile. So this is kind of what comes into that cost factor. So in our pink, we have eleven hundred BSLs in Whitman County, there's five point seven per square mile. Our average broadband serviceable location per square mile is three point six. So, you know, density plays a big factor in some of these decisions on what you can do. So we're we're working on a pilot project to look at some wireless technologies that could be deployed and looking at areas in our county where we have um existing towers. Not not we the poor, but um the county has existing towers that are used for EMS that we could put fiber to that tower and then maybe provide um wireless solutions for some of the homes that could be reached wirelessly. And then just the last couple of things, so that volume two of bead, the requirements uh as part of the to be a lead entity applicant, you have to be able to show financial capability, which right now, when you look at volume two, it talks about a letter of credit. Uh, Broadband Office, I think, is going to look into that more. Public entities usually don't get letters of credit, and we've gone through some exercises to find out what would that be like. Some places, the letter of credit can cost as much as seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, so there's there's a bit there. Audited financials, I think that's easier for public entities, obviously. And then um performas for the project area, they want to be able to see that uh after all of the grant funding is spent, that you still have enough of either a revenue stream or some plan of how you're gonna be able to maintain operations for at least, I think, five years for the performa, but obviously the grant funding would be longer. Um, part of the application involves talking about your managerial capability, technical capabilities, so experience with these things, and that's where um essentially public entities that that don't have existing infrastructure, those partnerships are critical to, I think, to filling some of these things. Compliance with laws, operation capability, ownership. Um, so for Port of Whitman, we don't have any experience with wireless, and we're gonna have to use lean on our ISPs that do wireless work to help fulfill those requirements. Lot of challenges to this whole process um as we move forward. We all now have some new public works laws that require apprenticeship uh to be part of our projects, and so we anticipate labor costs are gonna go up. You're applying for something in fall of two thousand twenty-four that you might not get a contract for until summer or fall of two thousand twenty-five. Uh, projecting what those things might look like and dealing with um we saw with some of the projects during the first round of federal funding. Um, we had material shortages, fiber costs went up significantly, some some materials were out six to twelve months from the day you ordered them, so how did I don't have a contract until summer of two thousand twenty-five, and then I find out that my fiber, you know, even if I knew exactly what I wanted, the day I got my contract isn't coming for six months, so. Um, poll contact fees are going up in some areas of the state. This is, you know, becoming a a burden on the poll owner to deal with the number of applications that are flooding into them. It's also becoming an opportunity to get system upgrades that they need, so, you know, mitigating that. Uh, contracts for locates, so requires additional contracts. And if you're in an area where there's a lot of new construction going on, Port of Richfield would be an example of this. Um, they've seen locate these as high as seven thousand dollars a month. Um, out in rural Whitman County, we don't have a lot of new construction, we don't have that type of fees, but it's a consideration depending on where you're building and if you're going on an aerial or underground. And then insurance coverage has also been a challenge for public entities. Um, several of the entities we work with belong to Endurus, a risk pool, and Endurus is um not insuring entire systems. So they're looking at the cost to ensure the entire system is um if they'll even give you one, is really significant, so they're saying, pick out pieces of your system that you want to ensure. So trying to say, um, you know, where do we have the highest count of fiber? Where will it be most expensive to repair it? Um, uh, where would it be among permitting process, those types of things? Ooh. Other questions? Yeah, I I didn't mention this, so I had a couple of things to say. Um, on those fiber to the home projects, what the revenues that the ports are are in counties are seeing, most of them are charging twenty dollars per month per home. So, you know, if you have ten homes, you're getting that twenty dollars per month back to the port. Um, there was a question about Starlink, unserved, underserved, so this is Starlink, I think, did report into the FCC maps, but I don't think they were able to reach those speeds consistently, so I think there've been some challenges and some different things there. Um, across the state, I I just continue to hear really diverse experiences with satellite internet, and I think it just depends on how many satellites have been deployed and how many people have signed up, and then when new satellites go up. So I think that's still kind of a a big variable for folks, but we definitely have um some people that are saying this is a solution compared to anything I've had before, but all of the unserved, underserved is self-reported by the providers. Um. And I wanted to say that too, that Curb uh does, now that they have legislative authority to continue to work in broadband, when you look at commercial applications, um putting infrastructure through your port properties, I think outside of bead, that would be another uh source of funding that could be used specifically for commercial properties. I think probably could make a case maybe to do it for um fiber to the home as well. But depending on your financials, you may or may not qualify for any grant dollars with Curb. And I think the reason that a lot of these projects um got off the ground and were able to get funding is because most of it came from grant, so they didn't have to put in a lot of their own capital, make it whole. I I know with the Port of Whitman's project, we're never gonna see ROI on the grant dollars that we received. We're just getting enough revenue um to cover our, in those fiber to the home projects, to cover kind of our ongoing expenses, so to speak.
Wait, could I, I'm gonna ask a clarification on that before I open it up for questions. When you look at it as a business line for Port of Whitman then, um, knowing that, yes, you got grant money, it's not like on a profit law, it it's, we we've grappled with that question of how you treat grant money. How do you see this as, is it something that's gonna take regular um investment of the of revenues you derive from another place? Are these self, will it be self-supporting since you have the grant money in, or are you making a profit?
So right now, and we've gotten a lot of grant funding, like the whole BTOP was all grant dollars. We are seeing a profit at the Port of Whitman. When we haven't finished up the performa for the bead application, I anticipate that our profit will probably fill a gap in in that type of scenario, be with three, you know, homes per square mile. Uh, I I don't think that that one will show a profit, I think that will be the one that I anticipate that would need outside funding to kind of keep it going, but we we take in about a million dollars a year of profit in our broadband work. Our other broadband leases. And I think that our middle mile from Spokane to Clarkson is the big hook up for that. I could definitely invite Camille with more information on that if the commission's interested.
Before we go on, I want to see if there's open the floor for for any last questions.
I guess, given that you you said that the take rate is lower when a private sector already has some level of access. My perception here as a consumer, both in the residential and commercial, is that we have one option, and it's Comcast or Xfinity, because everything else is really slow. That, to me, feels like a monopoly. Um, so this does not address that. Like, if you have one option, you're better off than lots of people, essentially. And we shouldn't be expecting competition in markets already well-served by Xfinity, for instance.
Um, well, I think that's all probably subject to the commission's desires, right? But that I think uh what we could see is from the co- areas where we had, you know, direct competition with someone else's infrastructure.
It just doesn't.
It wasn't the same, you know, take rate. It's, that's only those two projects, though, have only been completed for um, one of them maybe has been done for nine months, for a year, you know, so we're really, I it it'll be interesting, I'm what what I come back and say in five years, because we never know, you know, we know the port's gonna be there, so it's Port of Clarkson, we, they're gonna be there. But the other provider, they might sell, they might, you know, merge. Any number of things could happen, which might change the customer experience and then make the other option more attractive.
Is it atypical to only have one option, or are many markets only served by one viable, practical, and everything else being substantially slower?
So I have most experience in rural areas where there were probably no options.
Right.
Um, I would guess that probably one option, when you think about to the home, I would think one or two options would be a lot. If those, both of those options could come to you on fiber, I don't think there's very many areas that would have that, I can't imagine.
I had one option, and that was Xfinity, it was one, yeah.
And we'd have to consider how to be competitive, I think, with Xfinity if we were born in those areas, and that would be complicated. Maybe not undoable, but complicated.
Too much of a risk.
Well, and to that extent, the co- the the conversation at many ports isn't how to compete with, but how to partner with.
Right.
An entity like Xfinity to cover areas where you need more patient capital, where Xfinity's like, ah, I'd rather not, but okay. There's there's other people at the table.
Where it is just the DSL service currently, where it is very slow and unworkable, because that's that underserved. And even unserved, some of that is going to be the the DSL here, because those lines are so so slow, I mean, they said twenty-five was unserved, and some of these are like three and a half, seven, seven megabytes for these DSL lines.
They're just so slow.
So slow.
When Xfinity's thinking of where to make its investments, it's looking across the whole territory, other states, and looking for where it's gonna make the best bang for the buck. So they're not just as, they're not invested in the same thing we are as local governments, and that's the question of whether you can develop a model that's satisfactory to them, where they're not trying to undercut you, but like where you're doing the stuff they don't care to do. Commissioner Iow, I want to give you one last, do you want to say anything before we invite Gina Stark?
Uh, sure. A couple of things. Uh, one, I was uh, I was encouraged to hear that you mentioned that uh, Kara, you mentioned that the uh the uh fiber installers now are required to have uh an apprenticeship program. Um, can you tell me about the, how do, how does that come about? Is that a condition of grant money, or uh or is that a state regulation?
Well, I might have uh, might not have been clear, are all of the public entities are public works contracts going forward. So anything that's bid out after July first, and this is new legislation, and I haven't been the person in the training from our port, but those public works projects are going to require apprenticeship.
Okay.
Part of of projects over a certain threshold, and so that's where I think it's going to affect then um these broadband projects.
I I think that's a, I think that's a good condition, because uh um fiber installation has been a bit like the Wild West out there for uh several years now, so. Uh, my second question is, you men- you mentioned that the Port of Whitman, you are uh, you're making a profit now, um can you tell us a little bit about uh maybe uh a percentage of your revenue, what are your, what are your maintenance costs?
Can I get back to you on that, because I I have not really, I don't memorize numbers very well.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I'm happy to send something over to Camille and Alex and let them share that with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, we'll invite Gina Stark, who has a wonderful title, Economic Development Project Manager at the Port of Bellingham. Welcome, Gina.
Hi, guys. Uh, thanks for the invite. Um, can you guys first hear me okay? Perfect. Um, you know, I I I have to say for the record, it is really hard to follow up, Kara. Can I just say that? I'm like, what, what's left for me to say? Like, seriously, can I, I'll just say ditto. All right, meeting adjourned. Um, so, yeah, I knew that Kara was gonna cover a lot of that, I might repeat some things, but I think also for my perspective, what I also wanted to share with you, um, and some of this is a is a kind of a little dated, because, you know, we're so into the bead, but I think what's also really important is um as me and as a staffer and then Executive um Director Ralph Fix, we're entering into this broadband world, how did we bring along our commissioners? Um, and because they weren't really in this broadband world, we had one commissioner, um Shepherd, who was interested in this. Um, and so we wanted to be strategic about this, when we wanted to be intentional about this, because we weren't building um like some of them, like, you know, Whitman or even Skagit, um, really on on our port property. We were embarking on this out in the county. We were doing this on behalf of the county, and so um making the case to our commissioners and also to our constituencies, why, why were we doing this? Um, you know, and and being very thoughtful about this um and being fiduciarily responsible about this. Um, and so um that was kind of step one. Uh, we didn't want to just say, hey, we're building fiber, don't worry about it, it's all gonna be fine. Um, and so I kind of wanted to share a little bit of that story with with you guys and then talk to you about about our our project, and then a bit about how we are kind of engaging in bead. Camille, I don't know if I can share my screen, because I do have a map of our projects. Yes, okay, thanks, I always appreciate that. So let me go first with uh this, and then I'm gonna share. Um, so can you guys see that okay?
Or no, it's you again.
Hold on, it's just.
Maybe it's the wrong screen.
Um, I only have one.
Okay, hold on.
I'll stop sharing for a sec. Stop sharing for a second and let you guys to that. And we, I will try again. Let's see, let's try, try that one and see if that one works. How about that?
Nope.
It looked like it was going to.
It's not about it.
Second, I, we, it's there for everyone out in Zoomland.
It's for everyone out in Zoomland. Well, fantastic.
Very well, thank you very much.
Oh, that's awesome. Thank you, Commissioner. Done.
We see it.
Yay. Okay, fantastic. I'm glad you guys can see it. Let me move you, move you all so I can see it. So, um, yeah, so first I wanted to, to show you that, um, you know, we did the feasibility study through Curb. Um, and then what we were really intentional is goals. Um, we wanted to make sure that we weren't gonna just build out fiber to build out fiber, but we wanted to, um, build it out to where there was the highest needs. We already talked about the unserved and the underserved, and to really fill in those gaps, you know, understanding we knew that Comcast was out there, Zipley was out there, and we weren't gonna go out there and just go, you know, shoulder to shoulder with them and go, no, 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 we wanna, we wanna build here. Um, and then we wanted to provide the opportunity where competition was, where it didn't exist. And this was really important. We wanted to be fiscally responsible, because at the time before BE, these grants aren't really big. I mean, you know, Curb at the, at the max, you know, you're, you're talking $2 million. So, we had to be really smart about our money, and that Kara talked about as well. I mean, these things are operating on the smallest of margins. I love to say, like, the Port of Whitman, we're getting a million-dollar revenue, but we're, we're not, and you'll see in our projects, um, you know, that they're, they're just, they're scrappy, um, because we're building out to really the most rural, um, areas. And then we wanted to collaborate, and that's just key from the very beginning, and we'll talk about it to this very day, uh, with all of our partners. We partner with the PUD and the county. We actually have a broadband committee, and we meet, um, weekly to talk about what we're doing and how we're coordinating. Um, and then we also have our other community partners, like today, we work with WAPUDA, we work with WASAC, we work with the cities. Uh, we work with our ISPs, and so I think that really is the key to success as we continue to move forward. And then again, like I said, to support our local businesses and developing economy for our business, because at the root of it all, and you guys heard me, if you heard me at the WPPA, that, that is really the core of what ports do. Um, and so we need to still keep the eye on that ball, that we're building broadband, and broadband is economic development. And we need to make sure that we really kind of keep that, that at the nexus of what we do, and making sure that we're supporting our, our businesses, supporting our economy and what that looks like. So, next. Okay, great. Guess what it's not doing? It's not advancing. Oh, okay. Well, we'll see, we're gonna stop, we're gonna stop sharing, and we're gonna go to that little PowerPoint buddy here, and we're gonna go to that one, and then we're, we're gonna, you know what we do here? We are scrappy, right? And we're just we are scrappy, and we're just gonna keep on, keep on, we're gonna just keep on keeping on. And we're gonna hope.
Nice.
Uh, all right, you guys got that one?
Yes.
Okay, good, cuz that's, that's, oh, no, don't do that. Cuz that is the important one. So we're gonna do that one, all right.
We'll get there. I have confidence.
Good, good, okay. We're gonna screen share. We're gonna, we're gonna do that one, and we are gonna share. Okay, you guys got that?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Presentation mode, though, but we can see your screen.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna leave it, cuz last time I hit presentation mode, it kicked me out.
Okay.
Uh, so, so what these, this is here is, um, these are our three projects. Um, and you can see how they're, they're funded. Again, Curb, um, for the East Nook Sac, Curb again for North Linden, and then, um, State Broadband Office by the North Ferndale One. Um, and they're not, you know, huge by home counts. East Nook Sac, 729 home passes. North Linden is 678, and the State Broadband One is 456. Because you're, we're at our, again, the most rural, rural areas. Um, and because of that, uh, we, um, partnered with Pogo Zone, and Pogo Zone, um, at its inception is a wireless company. Uh, we're about 14 years old, locally owned wireless company, and with some fiber assets. And they wanted to go to that next step and, um, begin to build out more fiber. And so, um, and they were already had some fiber, and they were leasing some existing fiber, and they had, um, a backbone that went into Bellingham, and you know, you heard Kara talk about the meet-me's and the colos. And so the port, again, in assessing what we could and couldn't do, thinking about that risk factor, um, and thinking about, all right, we are, you know, a, a port with many other different things. We have, you know, two marinas, got trying to working waterfronts. We've, we've got so many other things that we also need to kind of balance and make sure that we're prioritizing, you know, what, what we're going, what we're going to do. And at the same time, we also had a county council, and a particular county council member at that time says, look, there's already tons of fiber out there, um, and we've got a company that was, um, then Blackrock, then WAVE, now is Astana powered by WAVE, has a lot of assets, and he's, he, he made, which I think was a really good point, it's like, look, let's not overbuild and and, and build a backbone into, into Bellingham Seastreet, which then goes down to the west, and which Kara mentioned about, why don't we try to utilize existing assets? And so, in the great public-private partnership with Pogo Zone, um, what we have done is to design a system, and it's a lit system. It's XGS Pond System. And so, and what this does is it enables us to use less fiber and be able to reach these homes out in the super rural air, no, super rural areas. And what that means for other ISPs that wanna get on our network, which is an open access network, as Kara had mentioned as well, is that these ISPs are able to lease a lit s- system, the lease, the lit service from Pogo Zone. And so what they're able to do is, is lease some space in existing cabinets that we have, and then that transport, and then they're able to serve the, the, the customer, that last mile piece. Um, they don't have to then put, you know, their own equipment, they don't have to, you know, worry about their own splicing equipment and all of this. Um, what this also does for us at the port is, again, we didn't have to build our own backhaul, partnering with Pogo Zone, who also provides our, um, maintenance and operations. We don't, again, have to worry about all the bucket trucks, all that other stuff. We just work with Pogo Zone to provide all that operation and all that maintenance for us. And they get the revenue from that. So they get the revenue from the ISPs that, that lease on that system. They also can serve customers on the system, so they get the revenue for any, um, customers that they serve. For the port, any customer that is hooked up, we get a piece of that, um, as well. So we charge, um, about $1,250. Pogo Zone gets a discount, they get $1,250 for each household, and then other ISPs, um, get charged $1,550 for each household that they serve. And so we get the revenue from that, and that revenue, we use to pay for our operation and our maintenance for our policings, insurance, and all that other stuff. And then through the financial modeling, we do get a little bit of, of revenue. Very, very, very small, but, but we do get a bit of revenue from that. Um, because, you know, we understood that we're not in this to, to make money. As long as we kind of break even to get a little bit more, if, if anything, we almost kind of consider it incidentals. You know, we've, we've got that little extra in the bank for, you know, what, whatever may possibly come up. Um, you know, like Kara had, had mentioned, you know, insurance is, is a difficult thing. We don't know at this point, um, how much of these networks are going to be covered. So how much of it might we potentially have to, have to cover, um, if anything happens to this network? So again, when we do this financial modeling, um, being very conservative, um, being conservative about the take rate, um, being conservative about, you know, the cost it is going to take, and then trying to at least get some revenue as a reserve for whatever might come, um, uh, for the next. So, the, the next thing is, okay, we're building these, it's really great. So our, our next thing is, well, what about BEAD? What happens next for BEAD? And in our region, w- we have 12 project, 12, 12 project areas. Um, and we know, um, we're not gonna do all, all 12. Again, back to what I was telling you about our, our goals and our strategies. Um, and so even looking at our BE, uh, project areas, we wanted to, we wanna be strategic about them, and we've always said, looking at our project areas, we wanna continue to fill in the gaps. And, and so, you know, working with our counties, working with our PUDs, you know, what, what makes sense, and what we've always said for us, what makes sense is taking our project areas and connecting. You can see that there are, there are gaps. And wanting to make sure that we make a network that makes sense, and that fills in the gaps at the highest needs. And we know essentially that probably Comcast or Zipley, they haven't built out the, these super rural areas to date, that they're probably not going to bid on the project areas that cover these super rural areas. One of the challenging parts of the BEAD project areas and process is that when Kara showed you your, your project areas, they don't always necessarily make the greatest sense. Um, for instance, I have one that, if you see where the Ferndale project area is, it covers.
Yeah, can you go to the, the lower right-hand part of your PowerPoint and then hit that and change it from, from the percentage? Make it a little bit, uh, even farther over?
No, no, no.
Uh, just to, just the percentage of you, so we could see the hot, you know, down on the bottom in the right, it'll
Oh. Hundred. Let me see if I go, you wanted me to do, I'm sorry, go back, Camille, hold on a second.
No worries. It'll, I think it'll just help what you're trying to illustrate.
Let's see here. Okay, can you see that?
Yeah, and then look in the very, very lower right-hand corner, and you see where you can change the percentage. Yeah, if you could just click a little bit up, yeah, there you go.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, sorry, guys. Really, I have worked computers before. I'm, I'm in a kind of a strange, in a, my conference room, and, and sometimes my computer just acts a little stranger in this room than normal. It's just, it's the curse of the conference room, I call it. So, so, yeah, um, if you guys can see that a little, a little better here. Oh, now, now, oh, now you wanna advance, okay. There you go. Um, so, there we go. How's that?
Great, thank you.
Okay, so if you look at one of the, the project areas, so the, the, the Ferndale area, the census 221, as they call it, um, it actually covers north, it covers the project area, it covers Ferndale, and then it, I don't know if you guys know Waukum County, then it goes all the way south and encompasses Bellingham, which Bellingham, you know, it is, is miles-wise is is a bit of a ways. Um, and then it doesn't have as many BSLs. So if you think about it from an engineering network perspectives, they don't make sense. And so it then becomes challenging when you look to our goals and our strategies, it's like, how, how do we align these new project areas, how they're done with our existing networks, with our goals, and then trying to also make the funding work? Because what you also might find with some of these, um, project areas, in order to reach some of these um, BSLs, from, like, for my instance, as you guys were talking about Comcast, and again, we're talking about partnerships, it, it essentially would almost require us to overbuild each other, which, you know, again, when we're talking about challenges and being fiscally responsible, how do we, how do we navigate those? And so, again, my point back to collaboration and coordination, and I think you guys were talking about, you know, your, your ISPs, I, it's gonna be critical, who, who is, um, applying for these areas? Um, I know that, um, I was talking to Axel from WASAC, and I believe that some of your county folks are also been looking at this. Um, but it's gonna really take a coordinated effort of all entities in each county to just begin to talk to each other, especially now that we're at a this challenge process, and begin to understand who's, who's doing what, and how are we going to collectively, um, overcome some of these, these challenges? Um, especially, you know, when the NOFO comes out, and we get, begin to look at these, um, applications. Um, you know, again, yeah, yeah.
A NOFO is a Notice of Funding Opportunity?
That is correct, Commissioner.
When is it coming out?
Uh, they hope, now that, uh, the volume two is out, Erica Henry was hoping that it would be out in June, but she says don't hold her to that.
And, and one more question, you mentioned Zone and
Yeah.
Who, what was the first conversation? Did Pogo Zone come to the Executive Director, or did the port go to Pogo Zone? Like, how did that start, your conversation with them?
I went to, uh, I went to Pogo Zone. Um, I was having conversations with, with Zipley on a different project, and we just mutually agreed that it wasn't, it wasn't going to work. And, um, one of their principals, uh, JD, they have, um, fiber here at the, at the port. And he stopped by my office, and we just started having this, this conversation. And he says, you know, I really think that we might be able to do something together. And he then introduced me to the other principal, Tim Dyke, and, um, we just said, you know, I think, I think this is going to be a mutually beneficial conversation. And when we, when I realized, cuz at first I was a little hesitant, um, but, um, not be, because I was so used to working with, you know, Comcast and WAVE and Astana, and I was like, oh, this is this tiny little ISP. But the more I talked, what really was great about them was, one, they were community-oriented. They really wanted to ensure that customers got served, um, with affordable and quality broadband. Second, or, yeah, second, they had, especially with the East Nook Sac, they invested quite a lot of their own funding to make the project happen. Um, because the Um, because the East Nooksack project originally was just supposed to be that original model of, you know, you build the backbone and then the ISPs will come to build that last mile. And it had to get changed, the scope of work had to change, the location had to change. And quite honestly, that project would not have been completed or been successful if I didn't have the true public-private partnership and the investment that Pogo Zone put into it. Um, so, um, yeah, it was just a series of really good conversations. And then them just honestly carrying it through with all the promises that they, that they made.
Thank you.
Um, so, and I'll stop sharing my screen unless anybody had any other questions about the, the projects. So, um, so, um, right now, again, with the, the port has done is it's partnered with, um, a consortium of other, with known net that has created, um, some other public entities, um, with the idea that, um, the application process is gonna be a heavy lift and it's going to be really complicated. And in many of the ports, um, they don't necessarily have the, the staff. Um, and so what we've done is, um, I think there's 12, 12 of us. And what we have done is pretty much created these like little mini subgroups. And that hits on the compliance, on the mechanics, on the communications, on every little aspects of the bead application. And then with the fact that we can each kind of focus on those little sections and then be able to come back to the group as a whole and help each other with resources in order to fill out the, the applications. You know, because for me, you know, you know, I felt, you know, the other applications. And to, to go alone is really challenging. I mean, just in order to get these projects essentially shovel-ready with an engineered design stamp is a lot of work. And that can't be said enough. I mean, we're talking about hours and hours and hours of work. Um, and if you don't, even if you had a dedicated staff time, it would take them all day and weeks and weeks to get it done. Um, so again, back to what I was saying about collaboration and coordination. Truly, that is going to be the key for us public entities, um, to be successful in this bead process. So, um, I think with, with that, I, I will, happy to entertain any other, um, questions. And again, I, one last thing I will also say in terms of, of networking, networks. Um, I definitely, um, agree as been said by others in this industry that fiber alone is not gonna get this done. Um, we're gonna need to require wireless. We're gonna need to require Starlink. Um, and, you know, the notion that we're gonna hit every single BSL, I, it's a nice notion, um, but one, it could be, we might find that it just might not be feasible. Or two, you're gonna get people to say, I don't want internet. And that's gonna be okay. That's not, that's not necessarily a bad, a bad thing. That, that just might be, that might just be okay. Um, and that I think that we're going to have to be, um, vigilant, but flexible and be able to pivot through this process. Cause there's just still so much that we don't know. So with that, I really appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation and be able to present to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you so much to both our speakers, uh, for, for joining in. And an invitation to staff or anyone else, if you have any final thoughts we're gonna discuss.
No, I just wanna reiterate, uh, my thanks. We spent a couple of great Zoom meetings just meeting these wonderful ladies and talking about how much they know about fiber. It's astonishingly complicated and they know so much and they've done such great things in their communities. Camille?
Yeah, I'm just grateful for your time. Thank you for traveling. I really appreciate that. Um, you know, you know, it's so, so it's mind blowing a little bit, isn't it?
The Port of Olympia is at the beginning of this journey. Camille, thank you for putting this together. And her question was, what would, what would success look like for this work session? Um, and I think for me, it was sort of a, a reality check of kind of what are the options that are in play? I had, guess one final question, a port that's just on the beginning of looking to see if it can partner, might be late for bead, but, um, where would we connect? Do, do you wanna tell us, do you have a telecom committee or how? You know, do you, do you participate in any ports association related committee?
I actually chair the broadband committee for the WPPA. Um, we meet, we were meeting once a month, but we are meeting every other month, um, via Zoom. And, um, you know, you're welcome for you, any of the commissioners and staff. Um, so, uh, all, all levels, um, are a part of the committee. Um, and then just recently, the State Broadband Office has set up office hours. One office hour is for policy, one is for infrastructure and then one is for digital equity, which I know Erica Henry has called commissioners. I don't know if you remember, I don't know if you were quite there at the meeting. It's more like broadband equity. Um, and so, uh, I will, um, be sure to attend those and share that information with the members of the broadband committee because I know we all meet so much. So I share out information to, uh, my committee members on that as well. And then again, we have broadband committee, uh, meetings at the spring and at the annual, uh, WPPA meetings as well.
Perfect. Well, Ben, with that, thank you very much. And I believe this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.